Good evening, it is seven thirty. Welcome to the Mililani One PM Milamani Board Number Twenty-Five. It is one thirty-six second. It is seven thirty-one P M and we are here for our regular meeting here at Mililani High School. Uh, my name is Danielle Bass. I am the chair of this board, welcome. And uh, please, if you are able, if you are able, uh, to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so just as a friendly reminder for those participating in person and those online, this is a hybrid meeting, so we will be alternating between board members and members of the public. If there are any questions and concerns, please raise your hand so that I can acknowledge both the members here, present and in the room, as well as the members and members of the public online. Um, as a friendly reminder for members of the public, when you raise your hand, especially those who are here in person, uh, and those online, please, uh, state your name for the record, since this is a official meeting. Uh, without further ado, I want to take, give it over to Rachel. Hello, Rachel, our neighborhood board assistant for wall roll call, so that we can establish quorum.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Bass?
Present.
Flores? Present, okay. Pana Ehhe?
Present.
Thank you. Uh, Pana Aki? I seen her online. Uh, Kurumi? Uh, Kim? Present. Marilyn Lee? Present. Ozawa? Smart?
Present.
Present, okay. Among?
Here.
Present. Freed? I see her online. Thank you. Trotter? Williams? Armadi?
Here.
Present, thank you. Park?
Present.
Present. Tasha Lee?
Present.
Present. Gustafan? Sabrina?
She says she's present, but her video is frozen.
Oh, thank you. Ross?
Here.
Present. Dahl?
Present.
Present, okay. Nakamine? Present. Sersina?
Present.
Present. Tegura?
Present.
Present, thank you. Pupuka? And then I'll come back to Kurumi. So I don't have her. So with that, I have seventy, oh, you, is she here?
Sharon.
Oh, Sharon, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Kurumi is also present.
Present, okay. Okay, so let me just about check that I have Sharon. Okay, so I have nineteen members present.
Okay, quorum is established. Members, we're gonna go right into monthly reports. Uh, unfortunately, uh, the firefighters from H F D were here, but they had to respond to a call. They provided me with a written document here, uh, to go over incident statistics for April twenty twenty-four. In terms of structured fire, there was one. Wildland and brush fire, there was one. Nuisance call, two activated alarms, no fire, four. Um, in terms of emergencies, they responded to seventy-eight medical emergencies and seven motor vehicle crash collisions. Um, fire safety tip, uh, in, uh, because we are going into the summertime, to, uh, increase wildland, wildland fire awareness, prevention and preparedness. Wildland fires significantly threaten holly's landscapes, wildfire and communities with dry conditions and everyday activities. Contributing to the increased risk, it's crucial to take proactive measures to prevent and mitigate wildland fires. You can do this by lightening the load, reducing fuels and the possibility of ignition of your landscape by maintaining your yard and cleaning your gutters clear, cool and contained. Clear vegetation ten feet around campfires, barbecues, keep a shovel and water nearby. Put them out, uh, cold before walking away. Watch the spark, ensure machinery, chains, chainsaws, weed trimmers and recreational vehicles with a pro, uh, operating spark arresters are maintained regularly. And finer, finally, you can learn more with these online resources, H F D, fire.honolulu.gov, Department of Emergency Management, honolulu.gov slash D E M, and the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization, H W M O dot org slash look out. That completes the fire report, uh, for today. I told, uh, I told the fire of oftentimes as a role of neighborhood board chair, you have to put out your own fires too. So I guess I'm an honorary firefighter for this evening. Without, uh, without further ado, I'd like to welcome H P D to give the report. Please introduce yourself and welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lieutenant Scott Viera. I'm with the Waialua Police Station. I'm the night watch commander. Starts work at six o'clock to seven thirty in the morning. So for this month, uh, called for service, there were a total of five hundred and fifty calls. Of those, there was one assault. There were three burglaries and one unauthorized entry into a motor vehicle. There was zero robberies for the past month. And, uh, tip for this month, you know, with graduation season upon us, I just want to, it's more of a reminder. I think most of us in here drive or have someone drive us, and just a reminder to drive safely. We saw an uptick, actually in the Waialua area this past month in motor vehicle collisions. And just wanted to remind everyone that, uh, please buckle up. If you have children, ask them to make sure that they buckle up. Don't use a cellphone while driving. Our cellphones have evolved into like mini computers. I have to remind myself and my kids, when we're driving, you get that text or that alert. I know you have that urge to check who it is, but it's such a distraction. I, I don't think I have to say much more about that, just a reminder. Keep on both hands on the wheel and drive defensively. That's all I have.
Thank you for clarification for the record. Lieutenant Vera, you're going to be coming to our neighborhood boards.
That's what I would thought, yes, I will be.
Okay, and Corporal Munna will be leaving us? You're here for the time being?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a teamwork, makes the dream work effort with Corporal Munna and Lieutenant Vera members. Uh, that's the change up for our neighborhood board. Questions for H P D members? Uh, seeing none, members of the audience, any questions for H P D? I see no hands raised. Quiet night. Awesome.
Thank you, nice meeting y'all. I guess I'll be seeing you guys Monday.
Have a good evening, thank you. Okay, uh, is there a representative from Combat Aviation Brigade Twenty-Fifth I D? I see Major Ball is online, please proceed.
Yes ma'am, hi. Uh, yeah, good to present to you guys and see everybody tonight. Uh, got a few notes to run through, so we'll start with, uh, the normal one about the job fair. Uh, the next upcoming job fair is going to be on the twenty-fifth of June at, uh, Kapalei High School, uh, at eight-thirty in the morning, so slight change of venue from normal, um, over in, uh, Kapalei. Uh, again, we have the training advisories that are going out. There is an email distribution list for those. Uh, I know that our public affairs team is working on additional social media, uh, distribution of those and, and pages. Uh, I believe they're, they're working with the team out there, uh, to make sure that we're posting uh, in all the different social media groups, uh, as well as, you know, whatever the official pages are that people want to prescribe to and get information from, uh, as well as on Hawaiian News Now. So trying to maximize the different types of media that we're using, uh, to ensure that the most amount of people have access to the training advisories, so they know when things like, uh, you know, artillery ranges or helicopter training or other things that are happening, uh, are happening. Um, we, we talked about it a little bit last week, or sorry, last month. Uh, but the draft of the environmental impact statement, the E I S, um, is out and available for the public to, to comment on and remark on. So this is the environmental impact statement, uh, that, that primarily deals with, um, the land over in, uh, at Makua and then on, uh, on P T A on the big island, uh, Pakalua. So less impactful for, for us here on Oahu, but primarily on Makua and Oahu, um, where it talks about the environmental impact and the different courses of actions that come with, uh, retaining all, uh, parts or some of the land or different use cases for those land. Uh, so I encourage public to, uh, you know, get out if you, if you want to have a voice in, in that and to address the statement, uh, it is, is available for that. Um, and lastly, the big one, uh, kind of a late update, uh, that we got is that, um, the Sentinel Landscapes Partnership, uh, was just announced. And what that is, is it's a partnership between the Department of the Defense, um, the Hawaii D L N R, uh, and several other partners, but it is a, uh, an environmental, um, uh, landscaping, uh, landscaping is, is too soft a word, but it, it's an environmental, uh, study and kind of transformation, um, that's going to be providing, uh, kind of agricultural, uh, re, uh, overhaul to about two million acres across the island chain. Um, Hawaii, Oahu and Hawaii Island all have programs that are, um, that are in, in play right now, uh, to try to, you know, improve the environmental impact of things that are happening, uh, and, and make sure that we're being good stewards of the, the land and area that we're in. Um, but that concludes my brief. I'll, uh, stand by for any questions from, from the group here.
Members, any questions for Major Ball? Raise your hand. Uh, member Ross, online.
Aloha, just wanted to follow up from last meeting regarding, uh, new gate and the new lock that you guys placed on there. Whether or not you guys are starting your patrols or whether or not you guys have increased your patrols or what the status is.
Yes, thank you. I remember that question from last time. Uh, so, uh, two parts there on the, the fencing, uh, have not really addressed the additional fencing. However, uh, our military police department has increased their patrols in that area. Um, while we work, while we look for a more permanent solution to, to physically secure that, but we have increased patrols in that area.
Any further questions, members? Okay, members of the audience, any questions? Seeing none, uh, I, I have a question, Major Ball. Um, you mentioned about the D E I S for Makua P T A and Pakalua Lanus. Uh, when is the comment period complete for that D E I S?
Uh, it is, sorry, I've gotta do math in public here, cause it's sixty days from when it was released. Um, and it was released earlier this month. Um, so I, I'm gonna say the, the middle part of July, but I will get you guys an actual date. Uh, so I'm not trying to, to add dates up.
Not to worry, Major, uh, Ball, I see that Army Garrison is here. So if you'd like to, uh, please approach the microphone, introduce yourself for the record and, uh, please could answer the question.
Hello, uh, my name is Selena Jentkowski. I'm the Public Affairs for U S Army Garrison Hawaii. So the second draft E I S for P T A is currently out and the public comment period is ongoing. Um, I don't have a hard stop date for that, but I can get that to you and I'll let you know. The Oahu E I S hasn't been released yet. The draft E I S hasn't been released yet. So we are looking at, um, that draft coming out within the coming months. As soon as it comes out, we're going to push out information on how you can make a public comment. There will also be three, um, three sessions where the public can come to comments in public, right? So you, you'll have a chance to actually speak to someone and make a comment that way. And then the, the Garrett, the website is always going to be up, so you can also provide your comments in that way too. So just wanted to clarify that, that ours, that the Oahu E I S hasn't been released yet, but it's
Please, uh, thank you for that clarification. Can you further clarify the difference between the Oahu E I S and this particular second draft E I S?
So the, the, there was an E I S that was released for P P A. Um, and then they had to redo, so the second draft has now been released. And that, and they've already had their, um, public gatherings. Um, there was a gathering in Aia and a gathering in Hilo where they, where the public was able to come and make comments, and that has already passed. But if you still want to make a comment, they're still able to online, um, or you can, um, I believe that you can also call and it'll give you information on how you can make a comment.
But in terms of the Makua Valley, which is located on Oahu, that is not included in that draft?
And the P T A, no, correct. So they separated.
By island?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So we can expect a draft E I S for Oahu later on?
Yes, in the, in the coming months. So between June and July, um, we're not entirely sure exactly, cause I mean, we just don't know that information yet. The contractor is the one that has that. But in the Oahu draft E I S, it includes Makua, Pa'amo'ho, K T A, and I think that's it, that's it.
Okay, awesome. Glad you were here. Thank you for, uh, for all that information. And maybe we could arrange something where we can have a more thorough here on a future agenda later on?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you so much, members. Any final questions for Army Garrison? Seeing none, thank you so much. Awesome. Okay, we're gonna move on. I see Kathy Pahinui from Board of Water Supply is online.
Aloha, can you hear me okay? Okay, great. Uh, nothing new to report, no main breaks. I did just want to remind everybody that, uh, we continue posting tests of, uh, our water regarding the contamination from Red Hill on our website, protectOahuWater.org. And we continue not to find any petroleum in the water. We are working on installing some monitoring wells and we are working on a couple of exploratory wells to develop new water sources in the I A I Palava area. That is all I have to report tonight. Mahalo.
Thank you, Kathleen. Members, any questions for Board of Water Supply? Seeing none in person or online, any members of the public who have any questions for the Honolulu Board of Water Supply? All right. Quiet night, thanks Kathleen.
Aloha, take care, bye-bye.
Have a good night. Okay, we're gonna move right along into the filling of a vacancy. Uh, I wanted to announce that there is a vacancy in Sub District Three, um, of this neighborhood board at this time. Is there any person who would like to nominate themselves to fill this vacancy? Hi, please approach the microphone, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Anne Smith. I live in this area. I'm work in this area and I'm very interested. I do come to the neighborhood boards when I can, so I would love to be a part of this, thank you.
Okay, so Rachel, were you, have you been able to verify residential?
Oh, okay, so I didn't get a chance to verify her address, so I'll need to do that.
Okay, do we need to recess for that or?
Um, so if you wanna nominate, someone can nominate her, I can do the vote and then I can do the verifying address, whichever first. But yeah, I can, we could do recess or we can proceed, I can, you know, do in the background while the meeting is going on.
I'm sorry, which would, which would you?
Oh, okay, okay, so let's just, just verify her address first.
Okay, so are we gonna, are we going to recess?
You can do recess.
Okay, we're gonna recess to verify address. Boards in recess.
So, sorry, yeah.
Reconvening this board, we have a report from the Neighborhood Board Assistant.
Okay, so I verified her address, but unfortunately she falls under the Sub District Two, so she won't be able to, um, be nominated for the Sub District Three vacancy.
Okay. At least we checked, huh? Okay, well, thank you for your service and for your nomination and thank you for Okay, at acknowledging that, are there any other, um, members of the community who would like to, uh, nominate themselves for a Sub District Three vacancy at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will continue on in this agenda. To the approval of the meeting minutes, I'm gonna turn it over to our Secretary Gustafson. You have a, we've moved on to the minutes. Okay, uh, Secretary Gustafson, is your audio available? Okay. Seeing none, uh, seeing that her audio is not available, members, uh, the meeting minutes have been sent, have been distributed. Uh, is there a motion to accept the minutes as written? Moved by Board Member Marilyn Lee, is there a second? Seconded by Board Member Among. Uh, members, any discussion in terms of the minutes before you? Okay, hearing none, uh, we'll do this by a boys' vote. Uh, all those who approve the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, the minutes are passed, thank you, members. And we're gonna move right on into presentation. I wanna first off, thanks, thank, um, a board member of our board. Members, as you well know, there's been quite, uh, there's been a significant amount of media attention in terms of fraud prevention. There's been many scams going on, not only in our community, but across our island and across our state. Uh, and Board Member Freed suggested that we, uh, have a brief presentation on fraud prevention. And I, I thank her for her research. She reached out to none other than Jackie Boland, who has served over twenty years at the A A R P and has actually a forty-minute presentation on fraud prevention. However, and we thank you Jackie, we love you for it, but we're not gonna do a forty-minute presentation. Uh, we did ask you for a seven-minute presentation and thank you for being here online, Jackie. We see you online. Um, and I do want to just give a plug, if you have further questions regarding Jackie's presentation today, please contact her and if you have any organizations in terms of fraud prevention, I'm sure she would love to reach out, um, as the community organizer for A A R P. Without further ado, Jackie, I'm turning it over to you, welcome, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm, uh, going to try to share my screen and I, I do not know how to use WebEx, so, um, stand by for just a second. Are you seeing my slides?
Yes, we are, thank you.
Oh, wonderful. So, uh, because I don't have forty minutes, I'm just going to give a little bit of information about some fraud resources as opposed to going into a lot of different types of fraud. But first I wanted to mention that A A R P is a social mission organization with a membership of people fifty and older. And we try, do try to provide information and tools to help people spot and avoid fraud, because of course for our membership, if you lose your resources due to fraud, um, you don't have a lot of time to recoup them, so fraud can really devastate somebody's, um, second half of life. What we do on Oahu specifically is we have a fraud squad of community volunteers that host events, seminars and workshops. We have a speakers bureau that will come out and give you a forty-minute presentation on various kinds of fraud. Um, and we also do a lot of big fraud events. You might have seen that we recently did Fight Fraud Together with, uh, Paul Greenwood. And, uh, and then every year we hold our annual shredding events in partnership with Access Information Protected. And those are extremely popular and I will say that Access is moving to Kapalei in August, I believe. And so the, the shredding events will be in Kapalei moving forward. Um, but what we have for you as a resource, um, it's open to anybody. You don't have to be an A A R P member, you don't have to be fifty or older, is our Fraud Watch Network. And if you think that you've been scammed or you want to find out if something is real or fake, um, you can call our toll-free number and a trained volunteer will walk you through your situation and help you decide what it was and who to report it to if it was indeed a fraud. You can also subscribe to free bimonthly alerts that are perfectly formatted for you to share with other or stay on top of the top frauds that are happening in the community. And of course, we advocate at the legislature and federally for fraud prevention efforts. Um, years ago, we passed, helped pass a law in Hawaii to extradite criminals who defrauded older people in Hawaii from other states. So those are a few examples of resources. Also, we do have a new program that we've launched with the Volunteers of America called REST, which it stands for Resilient Strength in Time. And what it is, is it's basically some online free virtual support group sessions that can help people talk through the situation if they have been defrauded, cause often it can leave a big mental and emotional scar for people. So you can sign up for these, um, counseling sessions and talk to other people who have been through a similar situation and get support. So those are some of the resources that we have. Um, Anne did ask me if I would talk about a couple of frauds and if I'm in my seven minutes, I will. Um, but one fraud that we see a lot of is basically a romance scam type of fraud. And it doesn't have to be romance, it can be friendship as well. But this is basically a situation where you meet someone online and you strike up a conversation, you begin to care about them and, uh, and you know, you're talking about visiting, but maybe you've never seen them. Before you know it, they're asking you for money because they're in a terrible situation and they can't get ahold of their own resources. So are they say, who, are they who they are, who they say they are? Um, well, a couple of red flags that they may not be is if they want to leave the official site that you met on and talk offline, that's a clue, because that way they won't be monitored by anybody. If they profess that they love you and they've only communicated a few times. Um, mostly, these folks are gonna claim that they're outside of the United States working and that's why they can't access their resources. And so they've got the money in the bank, they're gonna pay you back, but they don't have access to it right now. And then, um, they could be asking for a variety of reasons. Their daughter is sick, um, their monies are locked up, they've had a setback. Whatever it is, they're asking someone they've never met in person for money and that's a big red flag. So what happens if you fall for this is that they will take and take and take until you don't have anything left and you could find yourself bankrupt because of them. So not to mention the emotional, um, impact if you think that you have actually fallen in love with them. So that's one to look out for. And then another one that we have been seeing, well, it's the most commonly reported scam in Hawaii, is any kind of government imposter scam. And if you didn't see it on the news, we've been hearing about this jury duty scam recently, where you get a call from a government agency or, in this case, the police, saying that you didn't show up for jury duty and that you actually have to pay a penalty. And they threaten to send law enforcement to your house to arrest you if you don't pay that penalty. So red flag, government agencies usually don't make their first approach to you by telephone. They're usually gonna send you something in writing to your address. Um, if they want you to pay for something with a gift card for anything, if anybody asks you to pay with a gift card, it's a fraud, don't do it. And cryptocurrency, same thing. Um, but also if they ask for your banking information, either online or over the phone, uh, that's also a red flag. And then with these lately, we've been hearing from people that they're actually threatening them and yelling at them. Um, not very professional, so there's a, a clue on that as well. So, um, they'll just keep taking more money. Oh, you owe ta, a tax here, you have a penalty here. And they'll keep going until again you run out or you do something about it. So don't engage with them on the phone. Never, ever give out any personally identifying information on the phone or online. If you get it in an email link, do not click on the link and put it in. Always go outside, hang up, contact that agency independently and verify what's going on. And those are my clues. And again, if you need help, please call the AARP Fraud Watch Helpline. There's lots of different agencies to report fraud to and our folks will help you know where to go if you have indeed been defrauded or let you know if you've been defrauded. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you so much, Jackie, I see a couple of questions. I see Anne has her hand up and then we'll follow it with Emile, so go ahead, Anne.
Okay, so I'm going to try to keep this fairly sure. So Jackie, first of all, thank you so much for tailoring your forty, highly effective 40-minute presentation to this forum. I just want to make people aware, you know, I'm pretty tech savvy and I got caught in a PayPal banking scam. So, you know, AARP could make money off of this. If you're not a member of AARP or you're not over 50, find somebody who is because this is a once, you know, one size fits all guide to how, different types of scam and how to prevent them. The other thing is, you know, we, yes, seniors are targeted, but the nationwide, the largest group that has been targeted now is people around the age of 30. And, and I read Jackie's story, Jackie can talk about that, she also almost got caught in this. Now, I did get caught and here's why, so here's coming to my question. I knew better than to click through the, through the email that I got that said that there was fraudulent activity in my PayPal. I don't click through emails. I went and I did a search through Google for PayPal customer service, guess what? Google and none of the other search engines rub their websites for fraud. So I was taken immediately to a fraudulent website, which looked like PayPal, they've gotten very sophisticated, sounded like PayPal, had enough information to make me think they were PayPal. And it wasn't until I was $2,000 out of cards, so I realized, ah, this is. Anyway, Jackie, what can we do to get people aware of the idea that you have to go directly to your bank, the utility, whatever financial institution it is, to get to their website and not do a search for it? That's my question.
That's a good question, I mean, we don't really, we aren't, we aren't really telling people not to search for it, but we do give people clues about how to tell whether or not it's the real website. But I think in your case, if they were asking you to pay with a gift card, red flag, never pay for anything with a gift card. But also, you know, if you hover above the address for that site, check and see if it's HTTPS, secure site. If it's actually spelled out the way it's supposed to be spelled out. But again, these guys are smart, they're, they're always coming up with clever ways. So, so just be super careful and in the case of PayPal, I don't know where you'd go if you were going offline, you know? So, so yeah.
PayPal told me, this is a comment, is that you have to go to the address bar and type in PayPal.com to be sure that you're getting PayPal. And so my advice to anybody who's getting this, this kind of scam aimed at them, looking for banking information, is to call the number on the back of your credit card. If it's security or you're fighting, go to your utility bill and call the phone number for that institution and get the website from them directly, do not do a search because right now.
You're saying, yeah, that's a good idea and your credit card will have it written on the back most likely.
Thank you, Anne, thank you, Jackie, Emile, you have a question and then Dennis.
Just one example of what would, I mean, I'm wondering what the AARP could do if somebody already wires money somewhere and then realizes, okay, there is a fraud going on. And you know, like this case was that somebody gave you the bank account number, so you know where the bank account is, which, you know, bank is operating. And they ask for deposit, only deposit, not the full amount, and then you wire the money. And then you realize it's a fraud and then even if you call the bank to stop the payment, you know, the bank actually protects the client, yeah, so they won't give you the money back. So is there anything AARP can do in this case?
So AARP is not a law enforcement agency, we're just doing public education. So you'd be reporting these crimes to, say, the FBI, the Federal Trade Commission. What our volunteers can do is guide you on who to report it to. But the truth is, it's very hard to get the money back once you've let it go. So prevention, you know, the best thing to do is not send the money. Don't wire the money, don't pay with a gift card. It's, I have heard, you know, the FBI wants you to report it to them even if they can't get the money back because a lot of times they can get enough cases together to where they can form an action based on accumulation of what's been lost. But getting it back to the individual, you don't really hear about that very often.
Dennis.
Okay, the, is it on? Okay, the support information, you have the phone number and the website? Can you hear?
Yes, sorry, I've kind of faded out a little bit, if I can hear you.
Are they local or are they national or what?
Those two, the Fraud Watch Network and the toll-free number are national programs. Our, our volunteers are highly trained and they operate from multiple states. So we have some Hawaii volunteers, some Colorado volunteers, some Washington volunteers.
So if someone in Hawaii has a question or want to go to that resource, is it available to them? I mean, like, tonight, right now?
Yes, it's available from, I think, 3:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yep.
Members, are there any other questions for AARP?
Oh, Catherine, go ahead.
Yes, I was curious as to how these people get to your email. A week and a half ago, I had Venmo, five people with their names requesting $99 from me. So right away, I thought something is wrong, so I just deleted those email.
Yeah, that, you know, your email is really not secure. Anytime you use it with any vendor, a lot, those vendors can be breached or they can sell your information. One of your friends can be hacked. So it's important to think of your email as a mailbox, but not a secure mailbox. So if you get something from somebody that you don't know, don't open it. Even if you get something from someone you think you know, but you weren't expecting an attachment or a link, don't click on it. Call them first, just like Anne said, even if it's a personal contact, I'm going to call you first and make sure you sent me what you said you sent me before I open it. Because even just last week, we had one of our community partners send some encrypted documents to us that we were expecting. And then it turned out that that community partner had been hacked and that somebody was basically using those encrypted documents to shadow your keys on your computer. So if you don't know them, if you weren't expecting it, call and verify before you open. It's just, it's a real dangerous game now in terms of what you can open from a stranger or even someone you know.
Wow. Members, any other questions?
Yeah, so I just would like to wrap up and thank Jackie very much for, for.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not sure if we're there yet, Anne. Audience, are any questions?
Okay, sorry.
Members of the public online, any questions? Actually, I have, I have one comment and then I'll take it to you and wrap up since you did arrange this. But just wanted to, I mean, on the whole subject of imposter scams and government agencies, although we're not a city and county government agency, right? We're affiliated with the city and county. Of course, all of you members, as well as all the other neighborhood boards, will receive solicitations from an imposter who impersonated Danielle Bass and I allegedly requested money from all of you, right? So, you know, I just do want to thank Jackie for this presentation and I, we've been working with the Neighborhood Commission Office to tighten up that contact information. And I just want to reaffirm here, like I did in the previous evening, that you have a promise from me that I will never personally ask you for money. So, you know, and feel free to call me if you get some kind of obscene requests. So just thank you, folks, our, our neighborhood board, we have no fundraising tactics here. So just for clarification and over to you, Anne, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I just thank you very much, Jackie, for doing this. I know it was tough to think about all the information in that 40-minute presentation. Just so everybody should know, there's a link to that April issue with the scam guide. I suggest you read it and bookmark it. The last thing I just wanted to share is that one of the many things that's happening right now, it's kind of sort of similar to what Danielle was talking about. Buying things on Facebook, don't do it. Because they're rife with scams. And if you meet them in person, you might get robbed in person, which has happened recently. So again, Jackie, thank you so much. I would like to, I would like to have a larger forum where we sponsor or co-sponsor the entire 40-minute presentation. So if anybody who's interested, you know, can email me and we'll see if we can get something going. Maybe neighborhood board can co-sponsor, I don't know. What, however.
And I'll make a pitch, our volunteers, speakers, our, we have a former deputy prosecutor, former fraud investigator as our volunteers and they know a lot about fraud. So you won't get me for that presentation, you'll get someone even more informed. So I mean, Anne knows how to get ahold of us if you want a fraud speaker. But I thank you so much for your time and everybody have a great evening.
Thank you, Jackie, good night, mahalo. Okay, we're going to go into the community concern section of the agenda at this time. Are there any community members who would like to come forward and express any comments or concern? Or events within the community? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, moving right along. Uh, we're going to go into reports of chairs and board committees. Actually, I have something I'd like to share with everyone for a chairs report. And have been working with the Neighborhood Commission Office. I'd like to get a bit of a sense of your feedback, members. So I did receive a contact from Milani Malka's neighborhood board chair, Dean Hazama. He was interested, given all the political excitement in the Milani community, he would like to do a, perform a joint candidate forum between both of our boards. He has offered that to be a, to take place as a joint regular meeting of both of our boards. Sorry, I'm reading this, Tuesday, June 18th at 7:00 PM. That would also take place in the Milani Malka Elementary School. So it would take place on his neighborhood board date, as well as his location, given the fact that we have a smaller venue. That, with that, the format as suggested by the Neighborhood Commission Office would be that we would convene both board meetings. Neighborhood Board 35 and Neighborhood Board 25. I get the lucky job of convening both meetings. We'll hear from fire, police and community concerns for both boards concurrently. And then we would call a recess at that point, Dean would take over and run the candidate forum with various volunteers for timekeeping, moderation, et cetera. Let's see, the neighborhood, given the fact that this was a request by our counterpart after I posted this agenda, okay? The Neighborhood Commission Office has suggested that we mind our, we dot our i's and cross our t's on this one. So they are recommending that before we schedule this joint regular meeting for, and reschedule it for Tuesday, June 18th at 7:00 PM at Milani Malka. Our board, because we would be moving, we would need to reconvene a special meeting. Okay, that would be primarily online, we wouldn't come here to each building. The NCO will staff us, so they'll be hosting it at Kapal Mahali. But at that point, we don't have to drive out to Kalih, we can all stay at home. And they will staff us from their office. And all we need to do, if you are, if you would like to do this as a board, we would need to meet on either Thursday, May 30th or Monday, June 3rd to vote to move our regular meeting, which regularly occurs every, every fourth Wednesday at 7:30. And for the, for the sake of the June meeting, we would move it to June 18th. Okay? So that being said, I hope I explained that clearly, I was reading exactly what NCO has advised me to read. Oh, yes, comment from Rachel.
So one comment, so when you guys decide that date, the most important thing is to have the quorum. So then that's the good main thing.
So what, so we're not voting tonight because we can't, it's not on the agenda. That, that being said, I would like to get a poll, straw poll, if we will, and we get a feeling of what date is better.
They can contact you too, when to do the contact?
We could, we could just talk story and have a little bit of conversational things.
Okay.
Okay, all right, this is discussion. So what are we thinking on Thursday, May 30th? We'll keep the time, 7:30. Have a quick meeting to go online and vote to move the meeting. What do we think about Thursday, May 30th for a special meeting for that purpose only? Thoughts? Thursday, next week, Thursday, online. Is anyone hating that idea?
I'm good with that.
Okay, no one is opposed to Thursday, May 30th for a special meeting? Cool, all right, so we didn't take a vote on it. 7:30, we're going to keep it as simple as possible, same time. Cool?
As long as we send the agenda.
We're going to send the agenda, yes. Tomorrow. Yeah, we can do it tomorrow. Okay, so we'll, Rachel and I will work our tails off to agendize for a special meeting, 7:30, May 30th. So mark your calendars, it's going to take less than 10 minutes, we're going to, if, if can, if you guys want this. We vote on moving the meeting to be Tuesday, June 18th, 7:00 PM, Milani Malka Elementary School, joint neighborhood board meeting of both Milani and Milani Malka neighborhood boards with candidate forum to follow. All right, that completes my chairs report. Any question? Yes.
So my question is, first of all, I mean, is that June 18th set in stone? Because I think it's too early, yeah? The candidates basically register on 4th of June and then immediately, you know, people are not ready yet for elections. The primaries are in August, so it's very far ahead. Plus, would that meeting be available for candidates online?
Those are very good questions, Emile. So why it's June 30th is, or June, sorry, oh gosh, why is June 18th? From Dean Hazama is both of our boards ironically are on, in recess in July, okay? And Dean would like to cover, I failed to mention this, Dean would like to cover all four Milani races, regardless of their primary or general. Okay, so that would include Senate District 18, that would include, I'm not sure of all the district numbers, bear with me, House District 37, House District 38 and House District 46. Are all the contested races within our Milani, both of our Milani jurisdictions, between both boards. So those would be the four races. Format would be, I think that's still under discussion by Dean and I can report back to you folks at that special meeting. In terms of hybrid, the, the joint meeting of both boards would guarantee hybrid since our, both of our boards have voted that our board meetings are hybrid. As far as the candidate forum, which is not an official action of the board, right? That is not a board meeting per se, the candidate forum. That I have to follow up with Dean, okay? And I can do that on, you know, and follow up with everybody here on Tuesday, or sorry, Thursday, May 30th at our special meeting. Any other question? Yes, Emile.
So there is no way we could do it on our terms, so we would have it end of the June? And then we would be chairing it instead of submitting to their schedule?
Right, so the limitation for, for us is of course, the size of the location. So this room is quite small to accommodate the candidates, their various supporters, as well as the greater Milani, both of the greater Milani. uh, to accommodate the candidates, their various supporters, as well as the greater Milani, both of the greater Milani communities, both board jurisdictions. Uh, Dean Hazama is Milani Board number thirty-five. Neighborhood Board has the entire Milani Malka Elementary Cafeteria, so, uh, venue is much better. That's why we would be going for that date. Um, if we changed venue, that would actually become a cost matter for our board and just make things easy for all of us at this point. Other questions? Marilyn.
Is it required that we have a hybrid meeting that, that night? Because the, the transmission at the cafeteria there is not, it's not, nothing like it is here, you know? It's only a small screen, that's all.
Yes, it is required as both boards voted convening of the board term back in August of last year that we would conduct hybrid meetings. So it is a requirement for both boards to have hybrid meeting. Yes. Dennis?
Even the eighteenth.
The, the meeting on the eighteen, or excuse me, you mean the candidate forum and the joint board meetings, that would be that the, the meetings I can guarantee is hybrid. I want to say I'm thinking the candidate forum will likely be hybrid, but I do not have that and I have with the N C O and Dean. So please don't quote me on that. I don't have that verified at this time. But I will certainly advocate for that, if that's what the board would like. They want you all, okay, I will discuss that with, uh, my counterpart chair. Any other questions regarding this matter and my chairs report? Any questions online? Okay, I will follow and I will email everyone tomorrow. Awesome. We'll continue on with the committee reports, uh, over to Alex Ozawa. Is he online for community partnerships and community outreach? Seeing none, go into, uh, I see Josie's online for community recognition and service rewards.
Madam Chair, I have no report. Thank you.
Okay, no report. Martina is online for community maintenance and walk audit?
No report.
Okay. Uh, Trevor, in person for planning zoning sustainable development and climate resilience.
Uh, no report this month.
Nobody's got, only me? I only got the report. Okay, well, nine, we can trust Marilyn. Transportation and Ompo, Skylar, Ross.
Yes, so my report is all uploaded into the Google Drive. Uh, over regarding all the things that we had at this month's, uh, meeting, as well as all the different events that are going on. Uh, once again, we have our meeting in the first week of the uh, month. So if you guys want to know what's going on for the rest of the events for the month, or anything that's going on in those, um, I do the meeting and then I try to immediately post them within the next three days of all the agenda and all the paperwork. Uh, everything up into the Google Drive, so everybody can clearly see what's going on. Uh, nothing really big to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis, military affairs and emergency management.
Uh, yes, uh, recently we've had quite a few emergencies. Uh, we really thank the, uh, I guess the state or the city for their um, notification over all the different sources. But I think one of the things we have to look at is if you evacuate, uh, where do you evacuate to? That's what I would like to look into. Okay? Um, and I also noticed that the type of emergency that pops up, this time it was a flood, flood warning, okay? But we had, the response came in because of fire, okay? And so this extra road that they're building primarily to an evacuation route for fire. But I think even if you had something like that, where do you go if you evacuate Milani Malka because of a fire? And I think this is where working with the military or other sources can identify places where they go. The other thing is, um, my daughter lives on Maui and her husband is a fire captain. He was involved in the, the fire there. And one of the things they noticed is that people wanted to go and pick up their relatives or check on their relatives before evacuating. And that created even more traffic jams, both for the first responders and also for the families. And the disaster that happened, we, we all know about. So I think we have to look at the type of disasters we're looking at. You could have a flood like we just had, you could have fire, you could have a hurricane, strong winds, I guess, would be tied into that. And even a nuclear like the fossil arm we had a couple of years ago. And the question is, each one of those has a different response that the public should make based upon, in some cases, a shelter in place. And so that's what I would like to look at, uh, from the standpoint, both the emergency management and with the military. And then we can perhaps come back to the board with, uh, some information and maybe it's just giving out information to people in our but that's what, that's what I would like to look at. That's my report.
Okay, thank you for sharing. Let's talk about that. Okay. Uh, I want to follow up. I have a couple of questions on that, but all, for the sake of everybody, I'll do that offline. Um, Darcha, health, houselessness and human services.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to highlight that the point in time count that was conducted back in January has been released. It was released last week by Partners in Care. Um, some of the highlights from the, um, report is that um, there were four thousand four hundred ninety-four people experiencing homelessness. Um, this was up twelve percent from last year, um, overall. And then this was an increase of seventeen percent in our unsheltered, um, houseless population and an increase in four percent for the sheltered population. There's also an increase of, um, the number of Kiki who are experiencing homelessness, that's from five hundred fifty-nine to six hundred forty-seven. Um, and then out of the total number of people who were surveyed, twenty percent were sixty and over, ten percent were veterans. Fifty-five percent were living with a disabling condition and twenty-two percent, um, identified as domestic violence survivors. Um, if you wanted to read the full report, it is up on their website and it does, um, break it down by the different districts. So you can look us up. We are in, um, I believe it's District Five, Region Five.
Sorry, we had some audio problems. Is that Region Five, you said?
Region Five, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darcha. I received a message from Sabrina. Uh, there's some audio problems. Uh, she has no report for Parks and Rec. So we will move on to Marilyn, education.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Well, I, I wanted to report that, um, Milani High School had a wonderful commencement ceremony on Sunday night. Six hundred and sixty-four students graduated and Chair attended, I attended. And it was very well run and very efficiently run because we got out of there when it was still light, in contrast to some of the other years. If you'd be interested in looking at the program, I have it here with me, but it was a very well-run program. Um, I got a nice report from Chris Aguinaldo. He's a PCNC. Of course, the school year is at its end and, um, so most of the activity is, is over, but, um, May thirtieth will be the last day for students. There is a summer session, June sixth to twenty-fourth. And another June twenty-third to July eleventh. And August, the eighth is the first day for all students to return, which seems like the middle of summer to me, but um, then all the elementary schools will either have their aloha assembly on the twenty-ninth of May or the thirtieth of May. Um, and I'll be attending some of those. And those are a, a time for the elementary students to receive some accolades from various community sources. So that's all I have to report and we won't have much during the rest of the summer. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Marilyn. Okay, we're gonna move into elected officials reports. Uh, Nestor's not here with us tonight. He did send a Congressman Case's report. It's available, it was distributed or emailed to all board members and uploaded to our Google Drive. Um, and next up, we have Tony representing the Governor's Office. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Um, you know, uh, hearing about the scams, it really made me want to promote another scam, uh, alert that's been going on. I don't know if you guys saw it earlier this evening, the news had it. The Department of Human Services mentioned a scam involving SNAP and E B T, which is the formerly known as food stamps and then the, um, electronic benefits. Uh, so basically people are calling to say that someone was calling them with an automated message and the number was eight six six two six four two nine two five. And the greeting that you'd hear was saying, welcome to the Hawaii E B T and customer service line. And then it prompts the caller to enter a sixteen-digit card number. And they will never do that, they said. They will not ask you for any of your E B T SNAP information over the phone or prompt you to do anything like that. So apparently this has become a statewide problem with the scammer doing this new type of scam. They said to call the Public Assistance Information System Call Center and ask to speak to a live agent. And that number is eight five five six four three one six four three, again, eight five five six four three one six four three. Ask to speak to a live agent. Um, don't ever call that number back and don't provide any of your information related to your E B T or SNAP card or credit card information or any other information related to your account. You can also, uh, go through the normal process that you have with your E B T system and check your account. Make sure that your account looks sound, that you don't see any, uh, strange activity happening with it. So that was one thing that I was wanting to mention and especially timely, considering that you had a, a scam-related presentation. So thank you for that. The Governor's Office wanted me to mention some updates related to Maui wildfire. Um, May twentieth was day two hundred and eighty-six since the wildfires. And we are down to four hundred and eighty-two households in hotels out of the original three thousand seventy-one. Eighty-four point three percent have transitioned into long-term rentals. Thirty-five percent have had their lots returned to Lahaina residence. Seventy-one percent of lots are cleared and in the process of being returned to residence. And one thousand one hundred and eighty-one houses will be built on Maui with several breaking ceremonies already having happened. There's also many pushes by, um, this administration on the short-term rentals to convert them to long-term rentals. Uh, one of the questions that we got last time was from Michael, having to do with the Kipapa Gulch widening. Um, the Department of Transportation is checking on what happened with, uh, that plan to turn Commandment Highway into a four-lane highway. But they did tell me that the Roosevelt Bridge would be the limiting factor for widening. Uh, when they rehab that bridge to meet current D O T and American Association of State Highway and Transportation Official Standards for geometrics, bridge, bridges in general, light, lighting, et cetera, they removed the climbing lane, which is an extra lane used for short distances in certain areas. Um, and they removed it for safety reasons. So it's not likely that that lane is coming back. Uh, so that's where we're at with that one. So the limiting factor for widening would be that bridge right now. I don't believe there's any plan right now to look into it, but they said they were checking. Um, another question was about, uh, from Emile, about Scott Nago. So I was, I looked it up and the chief election officer is provided by the legislature. Legislature shall provide a chief election officer for the state. The responsibility shall be as provided by law and shall include the supervision of state elections. And I'm sure you guys know all of that. The state chief election officer is evaluated by the Ethics Commission. So on February twentieth, the commissioner stated that a motion to remove Scott Nago from his post failed. And they recommended, if you have any additional questions related to commission matters, that you should make your request directly with the Election Commission. And with that said, uh, if you have any questions for me, I'm here.
Thank you, uh, members. Any questions? Like, oh, wow, all the, okay, okay, hold on. I want to make sure I saw everybody. Uh, there's four. Okay, so we're gonna go with Emile, followed by Marilyn, Leslie, and then Mike.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I just want to put on a record that, uh, in regards to the Election Commission, uh, they were supposed to meet in May and the meeting was canceled without any explanation. That's all.
Okay, um, the question I have is, um, what, at the time that the Kipapa Bridge was reconditioned, the plaque that was on there, and I believe it was, it commemorated the, the Roosevelt Bridge and the date, I think it was a W P A project. Something happened to that plaque. It was to be replaced, but it's never been, never been replaced. And I, I think it should be. I appreciate your finding out what happened to it. Thanks.
Add that to the current inquiry that they're still checking on too. Thank you.
I was wondering in the, in light of the latest spike in homeless, uh, if you could, uh, possibly tell the governor or his staff to try to do some in-depth research on spending, audits, or any possible history that, uh, you know, contributed to not getting this job done, if it, the homeless spiking in actually in the state of Hawaii. So, uh, if you could do that, I was gonna have, uh, Tracy too, I was gonna ask Tracy the same thing, so she can take that back to the mayor, but I want to ask both of you to try to check into that.
So research or audit into what is contributing to homelessness?
Yeah.
In this across the state, right?
Yeah, pretty much. It's in the papers. It's really spiking, man. And it seems that the money and the time invested is not working. It's so, uh, just whatever you can do, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, this, uh, widening of Kipapa Gulch, the, when the Department of Transportation went to the Land Use Commission hearings for the growth in Central Oahu and approved certain projects, they said they were widening it. They dragged me down, just me, RM Tao, for a federal highway meeting back in, I think, two thousand fourteen. And they explained why it had to be widened, that it's a secondary corridor for Central Oahu if the H two freeway was to go down. So you have a four-lane highway up to Ko'uka Boulevard. Well, now it's up to Holly Halawa Y. And then down to, um, may, um, was that Lani Kuhana is a four-lane highway. In between is a two-lane highway. And they said they need to widen it for a secondary corridor in case of emergencies or just in general for traffic. And then they also had a meeting two months later after they, they dragged me to this meeting at RM Tao. And there was a, it was a meeting for Milani Malka, hundreds of people showed up. And they explained the four scenarios of trying to widen it. And they, then everybody thought they were doing it. They did that bridge rehab. And then when they went and took out the passing lane, they said, oh, no, we canceled the widening project back in two thousand fifteen. And everybody's like, what? When, when did that happen? They, oh, we announced it, probably one of those little advertisements in the back of the newspaper, one little sentence, oh, we canceled the widening of Amaiway.
Do you remember when the meeting was, the two that you're talking about?
The meeting I had was in, in two thousand fourteen. I could probably go through my paperwork and look it up. And there was a meeting two months later with, uh, every, it was, uh, was open to the community and hundreds of people were there. So, and for the passing lane, they could widen the highway in that area, at least to get the passing lane back. That would help somewhat the flow. But I don't know, I've kind of just flabbergasted the way this whole thing's happening. They said also that it was gonna be too expensive and we have like four hundred fifty million to widen it because of steep terrain and having to build bridges and everything. But allowing all the growth to happen without widening, it is crazy. Okay.
All right, uh, further questions? Mary?
I did, I just want to continue on the same topic because I did attend the community-wide meeting where they talked about discussions and. And that bridge that was repaired shouldn't have been the, you know, problem to stop the project because they talked about building a second bridge. So that two could be on each of the bridges. They also had another option. They talked about where they'd cut in more into the slope so that we'd have two lanes going each way. And in this neighborhood board, I know I asked several times, probably Senator Kidani, what was the status of that? Or, you know, sometimes I'd ask the wrong person. What was the status? And, you know, first they were gonna just finish that bridge and then they were gonna get to widening. But all of a sudden, out of the blue, we're told, no, they canceled it. So that wasn't a happy day. We really need to have that widened for safety.
Any further questions? Questions?
Not a, just Marilyn's one, where they had that emblem for the work project on the bridge. They smashed it up. It's gone. I watched them do it.
Thank you. Question, any other questions, members, for governor's office? Any questions of the public for the governor's office? Seeing none, thank you so much. Next up, Tracy, representing Mayor Blangiardi. Welcome, thank you for being here tonight.
Okay, good evening, Chair, members, community. Tracy Kubota, Mayor Blangiardi's representative. Few things to share. I think you folks have a copy of his report. If not, it's on the table, I think. But just wanted to give you a highlight. He's still doing town hall meeting. There's not another one in this area, but he's of course moving forward to go to Koko Head this week, Ho'oula next week. Kanoe Laney is coming up on Thursday, June 6th, if anybody's interested in coming back out or haven't, or haven't had an opportunity. And then they're doing a makeup one on, I think, June 20th for the one that we canceled in Wailea because of the weather. So a couple of things, wanted to make sure, you know, if anybody's interested in helping to donate lays, we have solo lay for Memorial Day. I got the information here, their drop-off sites and everything. So I will make sure we can provide the information if anybody's interested. They really do need help. This is where they want to make sure that all the, the sites are given a lay for Memorial Day at Punch Bowl. And everybody's encouraged to please either donate some flowers or lay for the sewing of the lay. The Summer Fund Program is looking for volunteers. Parks and Recreation is wanting to make sure that they announce that they're, you know, gonna be paying $16 an hour for dynamic work environment for people to be able to join the Summer Fund Program because there's a lot of things that they want to be able to do to support the Kiki and other communities. So we want to make sure of supporting Parks and Rec. If anybody knows, anybody interested, please provide that information and share. In the newsletter also, I know you folks were talking about some of these evacuation things that you wanted to get a little bit more information on. But just one paragraph in there talks about wildfire awareness month. You may want to just read that and just heed some helpful tips to be able to be safe in case of and to prepare for and how to keep your residents prepared for it. So wildfire awareness month is also like something that Department of Emergency Management, that the city agency is in charge of. And a lot of times when we have evacuations that we have to announce for any impending storms, flooding, bad weather, whatever it might be, Department of Emergency Management does handle that for the city and county of Honolulu. So if you would like me to request information for that, Dennis, I will make sure I can put that in our questions for the next round if they can provide some resource. And then we can go back and forth if we need more. The other thing I wanted to share, let me see, is I did not fulfill a response for the question, I think, that board member among had asked last month about the underground routes going with Cominnet Highway and Lani Kuhana Avenue. What happens is that DFM Facility Maintenance has taken a look. They need to consult more with Urban Forestry, which is a Parks Division, to be able to talk about the shaving the tree roots and what it might do to cause harm to trees or not, to make sure it's safe before they can do any further response. So we're going to continue to allow for them to have that discussion and I'll get back to you soon as I get a response on that, okay? Appreciate that. And I will take your question back also on homelessness. Okay, anything else for?
Members, any questions for Tracy? Like?
I saw on the Ring Camera that the city's behind on trash collection and heard from one of the people that I know that there is a bunch of broken rubbish trucks. That's how they're falling behind. But there was a bunch of streets in Milani that the trash wasn't picked up.
And I, I, I'll stand corrected if I don't report this properly, but I think they do say to leave it out because they tried to get to service as quickly as possible on the next day. And they don't want to ignore, you know, the week's pickup. It's not where they're gonna skip you for the week if they can't help pick it up in the next day or two. So I think the word is usually leave it out. But yes, they did experience some shortage.
Any other questions for Tracy? Any members online, members of the public? Seeing none, thank you, Tracy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have Jamie from, representing Councilmember Val Okamoto's office. Welcome, thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Jamie from Okamoto's office. We just want to say congratulations to the seniors of Milani High School that graduated on Sunday. And also a huge congratulations to the Milani High School girls softball team that beat my alma mater, beat the heck out of them to win the girls' state softball championship. So congratulations to them. Council is in committee week this week. Council member will chair the Public Safety Committee meeting tomorrow at 1:00 PM. It will be televised on Walelo Channel 54. There's gonna be some great discussion on proposed fireworks built to bring back some of those consumer fireworks that, that was around 20 years ago, like the little jumping jacks and stuff like that to legalize that. And a presentation from the National Weather Service and the Department of Emergency Management regarding hurricane season preparedness. A full council will be held on June 5th, 2024, at 10 AM in a couple of weeks. Following up from the meeting last month, a couple of questions regarding eminent domain. Generally, council does not vote on eminent domain related to heart unless there's an objection from the council. There was an eminent domain resolution on the council agenda a couple of weeks ago and it was going, it went through committee yesterday for parcels near the Pearl Ridge Station requested by DTS for easements. There was a second question concerning appropriations to heart. There was a funding request from the Heart Board concerning communications and some council members felt that was duplicative of what heart is already doing. So that funding was removed. The funding to heart in the current council draft one in their operating budget, the net budget is $2.9 million. And the CIP budget is $574 million with $250 million funded by the feds and the balance with the TAT tax and the GAT, GT surcharge. There was a question concerning revised, sorry, Section 36-1.9 of the Revised Ordinance of Honolulu Regarding Fair and Baggage Charges. I wasn't sure about that one. Good question that came up, does a stormwater sewer tax have to go to the council for a vote? Yes, it does. And Department of Environmental Services did indicate to the council a couple of months ago that it is forthcoming. They just didn't provide a specific timeline. And the general bonus for that is the city got hit with a consent decree by the EPA and they're still in the process of installing secondary treatment at Evo Wastewater Treatment Plant at Honolulu and at Sand Island Wastewater Treatment Plant. It's a, we shall do that. It's not made to do that. The feds told the city that we have to do it. And that needs to be funded with bonds. And as interest rates in the current economy continues to go up, those bond and interest rates go up. And unfortunately, those fees are passed on to us, the consumer. When is Airport Station gonna be open? I did look at this last night. It's still on track for early 2025 to Middle Street. And then is there any specific route for the bus to service Milani? I guessing that's tied into heart. There are routes that service Milani that go down to the various stations. As the project moves forward and more stations are open, DTS is looking at providing more route service to Pearl Highlands Station, but maintaining the, the current express buses that go downtown. If you need any questions, I'll stand on my written report. We can be contacted at 768-5008 or at Honolulu City Council Org.
Thank you, Jamie. Members, are there any questions for Councilmember Okamoto's office? Okay, we're gonna go left to right. Mike, then Mary.
What happened to Bill 10? It said morphed into some other bill now?
Bill 10.
It was to do with all the rezoning of agriculture, commercial, residential.
So the Planning and Economy Chair ran, she ran through her deadline. So that's morphed into Bill 64, Bill 64. And that's kind of at the tail end. So tomorrow's gonna be at 9 o'clock AM. They're having a hearing just on Bill 64 for ag and it'll be ag, cemeteries, utilities, windmills and stuff like that. That type was open.
Hey, Mary?
Okay, Bill 28 talks about extending tax exemptions to disabled veterans who are 80% or more. But then it talks about, provides a partial property tax exemption for disabled veterans who are less than 80% disabled. Is that like from 1% to 79%? Or when you, it says less than 80%. How much less?
I understand with the VA, it's, it's in 10s, right? So 10, 20, 30, 40. Compensation starts at, I believe, 30. So somebody came to the office, hey, they did this on Kauai, can we do it on Oahu? Like, sure, we can try. I'm a veteran and a couple of veterans said, hey, that's a great idea. So council members on board with that. We're not sure what that amount for that exemption is gonna be for below 80% because, you know, the mayor still has to balance the budget. But it's, it would apply to veterans below 80%. Some kind of addition to their home exemption is how it was drafted.
Or so few veterans these days. It'd be good if you recognized all of them who had a disability rating. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, members. Any other questions for Councilmember Okamoto's office? Any members online questions? Seeing none. Members of the public, any questions for Councilmembers' office? Seeing none, thank you so much, Jamie.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Kelly Anaya, who's online from Councilmember Wire's office. Take it away, Kelly. Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good evening, Chair and members of the board. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. Just a couple of quick things to report. Councilmember was honored to recognize the juvenile, the state of Hawaii Juvenile Drug Court as well as the Family Drug Court in recognition of National Treatment Court Month. Likewise, last week, Friday, he was honored to recognize the 2024 older American, outstanding older American volunteers. Couple legislative updates. Council recently adopted Resolution 24103, which allows the mayor to use his executive reorganization authority to establish a standalone Department of Ocean Safety. And Resolution 24-50, which will put on the 2024 ballot whether an ocean safety commission should be established. I believe Board Member, Trisina, I believe, if that's how you pronounce his name, had asked about a list of, I guess, countries of where the, I guess, Hawaiians immigrants are coming from. So the list I was able to come up with was Japan, China, Korea, Micronesia, Vietnam, Mexico, Marshall Islands, Canada, and Hong Kong, at order. And that's all that I have to report. If anyone has any questions for Councilmember, I can take them back for him.
Members, any questions for Councilmember Wire's office? Seeing none, members of the audience and public, any questions for Councilmember Wire's office? Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you for having me.
Have a good night.
You too.
Trevor Nagamine for Senator Kidani's office.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. Trevor Nagamine here on behalf of Senator Michelle Kidani tonight. Senator Kidani does send her regrets that she was unable to attend due to schedule conflict. Unfortunately, I, we had a little bit of a mix-up and I do not have this month's newsletter for the neighborhood board, but I'd be happy to take back any questions for the senator.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. Members, any questions for Senator Kidani's office? Emil?
I have a general question. I called the matter de la Cruz on Monday and left a message and I got no response. So I just wondering, after the legislative session is over, how do we get hold of senators, representatives? Are they still available on the numbers which are published online? That's all.
General, yes, there will be someone who is on staff as permanent staff hereon. I believe most senators will have two people on staff. Most representatives will have one person on staff. That number may vary depending on what other positions the legislator may hold, like such as if they're in leadership or if, or which committees that they chair. The only thing I can say to that is that because we're in interim right now, you know, depending on what else is going on with the office, you know, you may, there may be a delay in getting a response back to you. Like particularly, late May, early June is when a lot of staff at the legislature tend to go on vacation just because it's right after session and everyone kind of needs some time to recover. So I mean, really, that's all I can say to that.
Any other questions for Senator Kidani's office, members? Members of the audience, any questions for Senator Kidani's office? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Trevor.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a representative in person or online representing Senator De La Cruz's office?
Oh, yes, we do. Hi, Chair, can you hear me?
Hi, Jacob, please proceed, thank you.
Hi, hello, Chair, hello, Board, hello, community. I'm Jacob Lee from the Office of Senator De La Cruz. I'm also a committee of Ways and Means. Just gonna highlight a couple of things off of his newsletter. But I want to say first is that we're thrilled and gratified for successfully prioritizing critical initiatives like the career technical education and supporting local farmers while also fulfilling commitments made at the start of this session. In addition to supporting and addressing three new major challenges without too many painful cuts to existing state programs. First is the West Maui wildfire recovery and future wildfire prevention and management, hazard pay for state workers, a comprehensive funding package to address biosecurity to protect both our residential homes and agricultural production. Wanted to highlight a couple of the bills that was passed this session. HB 2404, which is generational tax relief, which reshapes two pillars of Hawaii's tax framework, standard deductions and adjusting income tax brackets to account for the higher wages and inflation. So going, I want to highlight next for the Maui is SB 582, which is expenses related to non-congregate sheltering and other costs relating to provision of food, housing, or other assistance for individuals affected by the wildfire. Also in that bill is the state's contribution to the One Oahu Trust Account to settle claims by individuals or Also in that bill is the state's contribution to the One Oahu Trust Account to settle claims by individuals or personal representatives affected. Now I want to just highlight some of the biosecurity ones. So for example, H B twenty six nineteen, which is problematic costs related to combating invasive species such as the R C B, little fire ant, brown tree snake, rose ring parakeet, two line spider bug, and feral chicken response. Also adding forty four new positions to conduct inspections at points of entry and plant nurseries statewide. And then one last one is S B five seven two, which provides the Department of Agriculture with the approval of the governor, the governor, the ability to declare a biosecurity emergency. For more details, there's, you can go on his newsletter. And if there's any questions, I will relay it to Senator.
Thank you, Jacob. And please pass on my applause in terms of just the biosecurity work that Senator De La Cruz did. We, that's been a major concern for our board in terms of coconut rye and acridus beetle here in Millilani, that we had a whole meeting on it. So it's a big win that we have some additional staff and funding to address biosecurity, especially and I hope that it continues to be addressed here in central Waho.
Thank you, Chair. We appreciate that.
All right, members, any other questions for Senator De La Cruz's office? Emel.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to follow up. I mean, are the staffers of Senator De La Cruz on vacation?
Oh, no, most of us are are should be in office. I think maybe email might might be best to, to be honest, sometimes calling us might be hard. But if if you can email us, we can get back to you. But call to, call to, but mostly email us.
Members, any other questions for Senator De La Cruz's office? Members of the audience in public, any questions for Senator De La Cruz's office? All right. Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Jacob.
Aloha, thank you, guys.
All right, onward to Representative Amy Peruso, who is available online. Welcome, Representative Peruso.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed. Thank you.
Excellent. So you know, I've sent my newsletter and it has a pretty comprehensive overview of what we did, really focusing on the budget this session. For this space, I will just note that I was very pleased to see that the Department of Education's budget was much better than last cycle. And I think you folks remember me expressing my concerns last cycle. And in particular, we dedicated important monies both to our summer learning hubs and also to our small and rural schools, as well as investing in practices that have been shown to improve learning outcomes and addressing learning loss that students are still struggling with from COVID. So I was, that's, those are, that's a positive shift. And I will also say that as a chair of higher education, I was also very pleased that the budget for the university system has been stabilized. So the base budget has been restored, which is not to say that there has been a great deal of investment in higher education. I think we still have a lot of work to do, but I think the restoration of that base budget was key. And now we can move to looking at how we should be investing in our university system to further support our young people. We also did important work around mental health and public health, which I know is important to this community because those investments will help us address the root causes of some of our issues surrounding homelessness. And I also am pleased to announce it or to share that our human services initiatives around housing and homelessness also saw additional investment. You know, I want to, and I also think that that in the allocations and the repositioning of critical staff in the Department of Agriculture for invasive species is really important. But I did want to raise a concern for this board to consider moving forward. H B two four oh four was mentioned previously and, you know, we started this session with a pretty clear direction around fiscal responsibility because we had to deal not only with the Maui wildfires, but also, as was mentioned earlier, the hazard pay for public employees from COVID. And I was grateful that we did not actually reduce the base budgets of any departments as was threatened. But at the end of session, it was remarkable to me that we passed a tax bill. And I know that folks, everyone likes to see a decrease in their income taxes. But I will say that this is something that this community, which I know to be fiscally responsible, should be watching. Because if you do the analysis of the actual implications of that measure, it primarily benefits the top twenty percent of our population, the wealthiest twenty percent. And by twenty thirty one, it will leave about a six billion dollar hole in our budget. So I I think that in light of the fact that we have not introduced any additional revenue generators that would fill that gap, I think the community members in Millilani should pay attention to and ask questions about how we plan to balance the budget. And and the fact that we're not doing this effectively is evident in, you know, the recent interview with the governor when he pointed out that the budget that we passed was not balanced. We are two mil- two hundred million dollars in the red. So there is some possibility because H B forty, it's not clear that it can be vetoed and still, if that move would pass constitutional muster, so it's possible that we'll be called back into special session simply to balance the budget. So I I don't want to always be like Debbie Downer, but I think it's important to note where we can improve our work and to call on the community to help us and to hold us accountable. So I am available for any questions.
Members, any questions for Representative Peruso? Really? That was very thorough, Representative. I think we have to do our research on that. Thank you for bringing all that up. And members of the audience, any questions? For Representative Peruso at this time? Thank you, Representative.
Aloha.
Okay. Representative Lauren Matsumoto is up next. Thank you for being here in person tonight.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. I have my report that was sent to you digitally, but I also have it here in person. So a lot of the report for this one is the community events that we have done, of course, session has just adjourned next month, and I guess that would be on the June eighteenth. We're still gonna have, are we still gonna have reports on that date? Do you know?
No.
No. Okay, well, I will send digitally my report where it, and if you live in District thirty eight, you will be getting that in the next.
One second. Anne, would you please mute your microphone? You did? Thank you. Please proceed, Representative.
Okay. If you live in District thirty eight, you'll be getting my report in the next two weeks, and that has an overview of some of the bills that have passed that I thought was notable for Millilani. So you can pull that out as well as the survey results, which everybody at this board has received a full copy. If you'd like to look at it, it is at repmatsumoto.com. Under information, you can get all of those survey results. And then wanted to highlight, of course, some of the bills and legislation that passed this year. So I had H B two seven nine zero pass, which was the Hula May bill. So if you don't know what Hula May is, it's the first time homebuyer bill and its accountability is the legislature to make sure it's funded. It hasn't been funded since two thousand thirteen, something that's really important, especially for people to be able to get a home here in Hawaii. And then, as I mentioned before, those four resolutions that passed for the Satellite City Hall, we just got a letter back from the city, said they are looking into the feasibility of a Satellite City Hall here in Millilani. So as we're getting more information from the city, we'll give you an update. The Millilani Malka Neighborhood Board wanted it put where Ruby Tuesdays is. So if you guys have any other suggestions, let me know. But they're at the beginning stage of the feasibility. We're nowhere near. I don't even think locations are even at the, in the discussion. So feasibility there. And of course, the resolution also for the e-bikes, the safety of that for D T S to work with Honolulu Police Department to come up with some strategies for the safety of e-bikes, the reforestation. And I am forgetting one last, oh, the emergency access road. And so my update for that, we had a lot of questions last time with the emergency access road. I spoke with D O T Director at Sniffin yesterday. They will get us more updates. So I don't know if the best way is to send it to you, Chair Bass, and then if you can disseminate that information. So they are working out those final details and they'll get those questions answered. I was hoping for next month, but since there's no reports, as soon as we get that information from Ed, I did want to highlight for the community report, the retirement of Wendy, our wonderful librarian of at Millilani Library, who's worked there for over twenty years. She's done such a great job, so wanted to give her the due recognition that she deserves there. And other than that, the last thing is, wanted to give an update. People had asked about the Better Together Hawaii, the Q P R training for mental health and suicide prevention. So there is that free training on May twenty fifth from nine to ten thirty A M at Hope Chapel. So wanted to give that information as well. It is open to everybody who'd like to come. They want to get as many people trained as possible, as this is a growing epidemic across the state as well as the country. And that is my report for this month. And again, look out for that newsletter with the more robust updates on the legislative session.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any questions for Representative Matsumoto? Actually, I have a question in terms of the Satellite City Hall resume for Millilani. Let's remain in contact on that.
Okay.
And
I can also forward the the notice from the city.
Great, that would be very helpful. When there's, when you, when your office starts receiving response from the city in terms of location identification and venue, potential venues, let's keep an open point of contact on that and see if that needs to be agendized for this board later on.
Absolutely. We should definitely circle in Councilmember Okimoto's office as well, as that's going, they're going to be really pivotal in moving that forward.
All right. Teamwork makes the dream work. And please convey our board's concerns that we relayed last month in terms of putting an emergency access road right down a dog park.
Yes. So there was a lot of discussion about that. They're looking at relocation of the dog park. But again, we'll get a full update from Director Sniffin. The reason I was given for that is when you have the the entrance to that parking lot, instead of having anybody turn, they want a straight shot since it's an emergency access, so there's no bottleneck to be able to get people out. But that was the answer I got back. But again, everybody, that is a concern and they're looking for that relocation.
Great, thank you. And congratulations on the Hula May bill. That is helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing that there were no questions or questions from the public or the members, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, and next up, we have Representative Lachica, who's available online. Welcome, Representative.
Aloha, everybody, Chair, members. Good evening. Trish here. I had circulated a digital copy of my newsletter. It should also be in the Google Drive. We'll provide a more detailed digital update summary for other bills and things next month. But for this month, just legislatively, wanted to just highlight the House Bill twenty four oh four, which has the, you know, tax cuts that'll go directly to families over the next several years. So just provided like a graphic on what the tax savings would be for each of those years. For a family of four and then as well as a single parent earning eighty, sixty thousand dollars, and then family of four earning a hundred twenty thousand. I also wanted to highlight the deep fakes bill that we were able to get through to and pass this session. It's a bill that would prevent the dissemination of deep fakes during an election. So it's very important with Senator Rhodes to get through the final hurdle through conference. So hopefully Governor signs that bill. And then wanted to just do a shout out over senior spotlight this year. Thanks to Representative Peruso's office, we were able to get a Kiki Caucus intern from Millilani High School, who's really an amazing senior, Quincy, she's featured, and I got to see her March last, the other night at the Millilani High School's graduation. She was one of the one hundred twenty nine valedictorians. And she'll be moving on to Tufts University studying political science. I'm just super proud of her and the work that she's done and accomplished. Just a couple constituent requests, I mean, constituent actions that we were able to take work on in the last month, including the graffiti cleanup along Kipapa, I mean, Kipapa Goch, along Cam Highway by the entrance to Corridge. Always, it always pops up there. And then finally, at the end, it's just end of year, just legislative session, just survey. So if you're the resident of District thirty seven in a couple of weeks, so you should also be able to receive the mailer. Just, you know, any feedback is helpful on how we're doing so far in office. And that wraps up my report.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any questions for Representative Lachica? None. Any members of the audience or public, questions for Representative Lachica? All right, thank you so much for your time. Good to see you. Okay, folks, we're gonna go into announcements in terms of next board meeting. This, I would like to just make this announcement here. We're going to be having a special meeting online, May thirtieth, so next week, Thursday, seven thirty. That's okay. All right, all right, all right, seven thirty P M. Online, the city neighborhood board staff will have Kapalama Hale open for the purposes to address the legal requirements of a hybrid meeting, but however, we all can tune in online. That will be for the purpose of rescheduling the June regular board meeting pending the approval of that special meeting's vote. The June regular board meeting may potentially be revised to occur on June eighteenth, seven P M at Millilani Malka Elementary School. So we will communicate clearly and thoroughly for all this, so we don't have any mix ups. All right, and for continued podcasts, videotapes of this recording will be shown on O'Leila Focus Channel forty nine every second Thursday at nine A M. And Channel fifty four every first and third Saturday at nine A M. Are, with that, I believe that completes our announcements. Is there a motion to adjourn? So move second. All those in paper say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you, members.